Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us for the September 22, 2025 City Council meeting. The time is 6:58, and we have two public hearings. The first is the -- I'm sorry. Ma'am Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwait.
Mellie Garthwait, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Brian Lox.
Brian Lox, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan, First District, present.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton.
Ruby Melton, Councilwoman, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbaraly.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbaraly, Third District, present.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
District Four, Councilman Gary Donovan, present.
Councilman Edward McMillan.
Edward McMillan, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan is absent. Councilwoman Catherine Tucker.
She's here.
Oh, she is here. I would just talk to her. She is here. Councilman Christopher Vargo.
Councilman Christopher Vargo, Eighth District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller.
Councilwoman Katie Muller, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone is absent, and Chairman Nicholas Pascal is also absent.
Thank you, Stacy. We will now enter into the public hearing for the Finance Committee on Communication J from the July 28, 2025 Agenda. Chairwoman Akbaraly.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 7 o'clock, and your public hearing on finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, and myself, Councilwoman Akbaraly as chair. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this matter? For a second time, would anyone on the public like to comment on this matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to comment on this matter? The time is now 7:01, and your public hearing on finance is now closed.
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. We will move on to Council as a whole public hearing, Communication C from the August 25, 2025 Agenda, from Mayor Dorinda Bora regarding a proposed new ordinance amending the code of the city of West Haven to include Chapter 85 in ordinance concerning the illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles and street takeovers. Would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on that matter? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on that matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on that matter? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. The time is 7:01. Okay, at this time, uh, time is 7:01, and we will enter public session. Would anyone from the public like to address the City Council? Sir? Please state your name and your address when you reach the podium.
I live at 21 Homestead Road Lane. Got a couple of quick items, actually more than a couple. I've been going around and around on this. A hundred, almost 100 years ago, a gentleman called Harry Huff designed the first traffic signal in the United States that was three-color. Just what we have now, sorry, what we have now. Here it is, 97 years later, the light in front of the police department is operating the exact same way. It doesn't know where the cars are, doesn't know what time of day it is. I've been around and around on this. I'm at the mayor's office, Public Works, State of Connecticut. I was told to get ahold of Charlie Young, but I think he died because he never returns my calls. I've been trying to get this light fixed. They put in a new camera over the light to see where the traffic is, but it's still just on a timer. And if you're coming up that road, I think it's Sawmill or something, and there's a tractor trailer in front of you, you're not going to make the light when it turns. It goes green for maybe 20 seconds and goes right back to red for like 25 seconds, servicing, I think, Hillside or some road. That light needs to be brought up to speed. It's 100 years behind the times. So that's it on that. Down the beach, where I am retired, and it's my social life now, I'll go down there a lot, there's food trucks now, much like Long Wharf parked on some little street by the Bocci Courts. And the latest thing is, when you have a food truck, is you have a generator. And the gentleman that's down there, he's got a truck, I think it's called Old Mexico or something very similar, he starts up a generator about 10:30, 11:00 in the morning, 12,000-watt generator, and that rascal runs till like sunset every day, day after day after day. It's a, it's a generator, not an, not an inverter. It makes a ton of noise. He doesn't care, and it just runs and runs and runs. You can't even talk over it. If the city's going to have trucks down there in the future, much like Long Wharf, either supply them electricity, put it on a meter or something, or require them to have inverters because they're much quieter and they use a lot less fuel. I have to go to emissions testing every eight months on average at 20 bucks a shot to make sure my catalytic converters are on. These guys are down there just running these really dirty machines for a third of the day. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Now, this came up this morning, but it happens a lot. I walk every day on Jones Hill Road. Probably some of you people see me going up and down the road with my little rain hat on. The light at the intersection of Woodmont and Jones Hill Road, which operates phenomenally well, has a tripper right up by Jones Hill Road. So if the first car doesn't hit that tripper, the cars just line up. This morning, I got down there, I bet there were a dozen cars sitting there waiting for the light to turn, but the woman at the front of the line isn't up to the tripper. It's in the road, it's not overhead. And she wasn't going to go. I had to go over and knock on her window to get her to pull up 10 feet so that all of those people, none of which said "thank you" later, could actually go. This happens a lot. You need a sign there that says "pull up to here," or maybe a white stripe in the road. When the road got paved, all of the paint got taken out, and it's gone. It's been gone for years. So you need to let people know they need to get up to this point, or the light doesn't know they're there. And like I say, that light works great. So whoever set up that light should go up to the police department and fix that one. And this is really a quickie. I just noticed that when I came in, normally when I'm here, the lot's full of cars. Tonight, it was empty. The lines need to be painted again. There's no lines out there. I didn't know where to put the car without all the other cars telling me where to go. So I don't know when they were last painted, but when you get a chance, maybe put the lines back in the parking lot so people know where to put the cars. That's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the City Council? Sir?
Well, good evening. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the members of the City Council for--
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I need your name and--
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Justin Weingarten here, and it's 215 Beach Street.
Thank you.
All right. So I want to, first, I want to thank you for, the members of the City Council, for letting me speak to you tonight. Uh, my wife and I live in the surrounding area where the new restaurant, Riva, recently opened. Uh, since July, Riva has had live music consistently every Saturday and Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. We ourselves, we own a decibel reader, and from where we are, the decibel level is above the legal stated, legal limit stated in our city's ordinance for residential areas during daytime hours. I've documented evidence of this, as well as two other independent parties that have taken readings during the live performances that show the noise excess exceeding noise ordinance by almost 50%. Now, let me state, I do welcome Riva. I want them to succeed. It's another step in further revitalizing the development in West Haven and will hopefully lead West Haven to becoming a diverse and thriving business area for the community and the state of Connecticut. With that said, the live music has seriously affected our way of life, even affecting our mental health, so much so that our neighbors and ourselves are forced to close our windows and balcony doors as a result of the live music. Uh, my wife and I have even felt forced to leave our home. Uh, it's been that affecting. I'm not alone, and I know of at least a minimum of 25 residents in our area that are affected by the noise pollution all the way down to Second Avenue. I've also made several complaints over the last two months to the police on the occasions Riva is violating the city ordinance. Uh, just note that I will be submitting a formal request under the Freedom of Information Act for the results, if any, of the readings taken by the city itself. Several performances are still scheduled over the next week, a couple weeks, on Saturday and Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00. So now would be a great time for the city to closely monitor the noise levels and ensure that they're in compliance with the city's ordinance before the season ends and before the new one begins in the spring. Now, I've worked in finance for over 21 years, and the one constant in my line of work is that profit should never supersede policy. While I'm in favor of Riva doing well, as a new business, of course, what's great for business should not supersede policy, especially when there is a clear violation. Further, one's business should not have precedence over the community in which they serve. Um, note that I don't aim to shut the music down. We just want it turned down to a respectable level that is within the decibel limit during daytime hours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the City Council? For a second time, would anyone else, ma'am?
Hi, Bonnie Poseck, 107 East Avenue. I'm kind of piggybacking on, um, Justin. Um, I'm curious about, now that the summer has ended, and the parking that has been going on in the beach lots is, is going to be going down quite a bit. I'm curious about what the revenue is for this past year. This has been a really busy year down at, down at the beach, and I wanted to, I'm especially curious about the parking lot next to Riva, which does not appear to have a camera, and I'm kind of curious about how we're making sure that people are paying to park there, um, because now everyone knows our taxes have gone up, and I'd like to see some evidence of some revenue being generated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ma'am?
Hello, everyone. My name is Sonya Bakot. Um, I live at 175 Main Street in the corner of Main and Third. I've been here for about 15 years, gone to 16. And the concern that I have is, um, the fact that because I'm on the corner of Main and Third, I usually don't see a lot of activity because I go to work like, um, 4:30 in the morning, and I usually don't get back until 6 o'clock in the evening. But since I've put cameras up throughout the years, and now that I am home due to medical condition, I have noticed a lot of one-way driving up Third. And I'm on the corner of Main and Third. Um, my car was hit three times, parked at the end of my driveway, and I'm not going to move her because she's, I pay taxes and she can sit there. But she's a 24-year-old car, and I really like it because she runs good, Mazda Malenia 2004. And, um, I, 2001, rather. And I, I, I am trying to comprehend why the folks are coming up the one-way as you go towards, um, Main, Yield Package Stores across the street from me. So at some point, it has to stop, or at least tighten, come down some, you know, the, the one-way driving up from Letni Place, I believe it's called. I see it on my camera. I submitted pictures to Ms. Kate Paris via internet, you know, email. So she has some of the pictures, but I have a lot more because my cameras catch it all. So I need for some type of resolution from Letni Place coming up Main, up Third, rather, Avenue, because there's no reason why people should be coming up Third Avenue on a one-way street. It's one-way. All the cars are facing you. So I don't know how to make it make sense. I don't, I need your help. I need to stop. My daughter's visually impaired, and she's afraid to, um, I take her everywhere now because she already almost got hit on the corner of Main and Third. And I have visually impaired signs up. I have them placed in coming up Main and going down Main at that three-way stop. So I don't know what else I can do, but I feel that, um, I need some help from the city to stop, or at least lessen the one-way traffic. Okay? If it gets hit again, I don't know what to do. I don't want, I don't want my car to get hit. She, she's, she's a good ride, you know, so, yes. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my first name is Mark, last name Alami. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't speak English that much, but I'm gonna try to, you know, to explain to you like as best as I can. So I live in 10 Collin Avenue, West Haven. I've been a resident here since 2016, and I just moved into Collin Avenue. Actually, Collin Avenue is so bad. It's really bad. The route is so bad. Never been cleaned for many years, many years. I asked my neighborhood, they said no one touched that street. Um, they have so many holes, it's no one fixed it at all. I, I came to the mayor's office, not Ms. Dorinda, no, the mayor before. I came to the mayor's office multiple times. Um, from the office, the lady, the secretary, she just told me go to RAB. I spoke to, I spoke to the secretary of RAB because RAB is not available. He wasn't that time, like multiple times, he was not available. So made so many requests, no one showed up. Just two times, they show up, just, they just put the dirt in the holes, they put some glue, and they left it like that. After like two, three weeks, it was raining. The street came back same, exactly. So it's so bad. It's really bad.
Sir, can you just tell us the name of the road again?
Sure. It's Collin Avenue.
Collin, C-U-L-L?
C-U-L-L-E-N.
E-N, thank you.
And that's the first concern. The second concern, which is, um, first thing I'm gonna say, thank you, Ms. Dorinda, for last Tuesday. She was concerned about the, you know, she was in a parking lot in the West Haven Police Department, and I seen her by myself when I had a meeting with Agenda. And just would like to thank her. And the second thing, which is, I'm just concerned, I just need explanation. In August 4, 2025, um, we had a public meeting in West Haven Police Department, and actually, I just like, I was like a, as a citizen, exercised my rights in the Constitution, and asked multiple questions to the chief of West Haven Police Department. But actually, not like what I expected. They answered me with yelling, which is chief of West Haven Police Department, violated my rights in Constitution. It was disrespectfully with me, was yelling in front of everybody. He just asked me, "shh," which is, that's not right. This is not, not, not really respectful. It's not, no, it's not acceptable at all. But the problem is, the mayor, she was there, with my respect to the mayor. She tried her best to, you know, to, to help the resident as much as she can. But in the same meantime, I'm trying to, like, to get explanation. She was sitting there. She was behind me, but she did not say nothing to defend her resident. So I'm just asking for explanation. That's all my concern. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you for that nice meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And just, um, for the record, public session is not a back-and-forth discussion between the residents and the council. This is your opportunity to present questions, comments, and concerns to us, and then we will address, um, address them in due course. Would anyone else like to address the City Council? For a second time, would any, ma'am, I'm sorry, it's a one-time speaking rule. If you want to email your council person, ma'am?
Good evening. 483 Washington Avenue. I live on the corner of Washington Avenue and Washington Manor Avenue. Washington Manor, Washington Manor Avenue was always a very quiet street. Um, a lot of the UNH students are now coming into these multifamily houses on Washington Avenue. Um, they're bringing two, three, four cars. Some of the multis are renting per bedroom. Um, Washington Avenue Manor is now car-to-car from Corner all the way back past the driveway of Giannotti. Um, cars will park close to the stop sign. Cars coming in, there's a, there's going to be a collision there. Um, there's already been a couple over time, but it's going to get worse. And I don't know what's going to happen this winter. Um, the renters do not own shovels, and so shoveling out cars is, um, is going to be interesting if we get any appreciable amount of snow. And then who's going to park in those shoveled-out spots? I think it could be, um, an issue come winter, but it's also having issues this summer. Um, if, I'm sure everybody knows, we have three apartment buildings that have no parking on the corner of Main and Washington. And Giannotti, their parking lot isn't big enough for what they house. So there's a lot of overflow parking that happens. And those, we found out, they like to park over on the Manor because it's quiet, and they don't want to park in the municipal lot. I don't know if the municipal lot closes, or if these apartment renters could use the municipal lot to park in, um, but let maybe the building owners know. So I just know in my immediate area that with the college students back, it, it's just car, 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 car. A car got towed the other night because of where it was parked. It was parked blocking a car in that wouldn't be able to get out, and it was too close to the stop sign. I know multiple cars have been ticketed. So I've asked, um, that we get a "no parking from here to, to Corner" sign, but I get the runaround. I'm told to call the police station. I asked the officer, he says, "No, you got to call the city." And, you know, it, it, at least one sign that says "no parking from here to Corner" because it makes the street blind, and that's my bigger, my biggest concern. But just to let the City Council know that come winter, with, if we ever have to do alternate side of the street parking, it's going to be really interesting. And if everybody knows where that street is, you know it's very short going from Washington Avenue back to, to Giannotti. It's very short, and if you go there at night, car, 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 car. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step away, just for the record, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Chris Petrucci.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Council, ma'am?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Carmela Quiñones. I live at the 215 Beach Condominiums, the Savin Beach Condominiums. Um, so I just have two concerns. One is that Moore Street--
Ma'am, I'm sorry, could you just say your last name one more time?
Quiñones.
Would you mind spelling that?
Q-U-I-N-O-N-E-S.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, so the Moore Street is a one-way street, and, um, there's cars coming up. That street is so narrow that as cars are coming in, and I'm not saying it's the people that, um, in the new condos are coming up, but there have been a couple of altercations, people getting out of their cars and arguing in the middle of that Moore Street. Um, so that's a concern for me. My other thing is that whatever happened to the buoys that were placed in the water, uh, years ago, when I first moved into West Haven, there used to be the buoys placed specifically, you know, in front of the, let's say where Riva's is, all the way down maybe to where the bridge is at. And then I would see it right by the, um, maybe the jet ski. I don't know if that's a club or something, but, uh, for the past two years, I've been calling the city saying, "Whatever happened to the buoys?" Because what's happening is that the people that are riding these jet skis, they're spinning up in circles, they're coming up to the beach there with full families swimming there. So there used to be buoys placed up front, and I'm not quite sure what happened to them, or is this service that we don't pay for anymore, or something, a contract no longer has? But I, I'm just concerned that if somebody is swimming under the water and that jet ski comes in front of the buoys and hits a child or swimmer, or just runs into someone else, that can be very fatal. So if someone can look into that, that's just my second concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the City Council? For a second time, would anyone else like to address the City Council? Third and final time, would anyone like to address the City Council? Seeing none, public session is closed. Time is 7:22. Before we head into the regular meeting, we're just going to take a very quick, uh, five-minute recess. Time is 7:22. The council's in recess. The council is in recess.[270.77]
There's a few other minor changes. But, you know, that's really the crux of the agreement. The cost, the added cost to the board budget is going to be less than $200,000 each of the years in question, so we're not dealing with a tremendous amount of money. Of course, we're only dealing with 23 people, albeit some of the higher paid people in the city. So, so that's a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Thank you. Before I turn over to the council, I just have a couple of questions. So, I'm just going to use round numbers just for the sake of being of ease. So, it looks like the jump in total salary between this current fiscal year and next year is about $192,000, and then I get about $202,400, and then the last year is $165,847. So, if I add those all together, over the life of the contract, it has a budgetary impact of about $560,267.
Sounds about right.
And that's for salary?
Yes.
What about insurance, medical insurance, life insurance? Are there any cost adjustments that are going to have an impact on our budgets over the next few years?
Well, in terms of health insurance, of course, we don't know how much it's going to go up. We know it's going to go up, right? Whether it goes up 4%, 7%, that's going to happen no matter what. We've negotiated a half a percent increase in the second and third years to help offset that. But obviously, that's not going to offset a 7% increase in the cost of insurance. So, that will certainly go up. Life insurance tends to be a fairly nominal expense in the scheme of things. So, I don't anticipate that that's going to have a major significant impact. But certainly, you know, health insurance is health insurance.
Even though when the life insurance were going from a flat $120,000 per employee to whatever the salary was at the time of that employee's passing, that difference isn't going to have a substantial impact on our budget?
I don't, because life insurance is a relatively small cost. It's like 12 cents per thousand, per month, per employee. It's pretty inexpensive.
Okay. Questions from the council? Councilwoman Heffernan?
Hi, how are you?
Attorney Dugess, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you. You?
Well, thank you. Now, with the health insurance, if, why wouldn't they be eligible for Medicare at 65? Are they not paying into Medicare at this time?
They, so, teachers and administrators, when they retire, they are under the Connecticut Teacher Retirement Board Insurance System. And so, what that is, is the state offers a Medicare Advantage Plan, and the state provides a stipend to help offset that. And so, I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah, it's through the state.
Okay. Because in the contract, if a person's not eligible for Medicare, if an administrator is not eligible for Medicare, the Board of Ed will pay for their complete premium?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman McMillan?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
I'm just looking here on page 15, and it's under your article, and it says miscellaneous. And in letter A, it states, "The Board of Education shall pay each administrator the sum of $300 for conference expenses to be paid in one lump sum." So, my question to you is, as it relates to these conference expenses, when we, the council, had put together a account, I believe it was, where all those expenses were going to come out of, so is that a part of that?
I don't know where it falls in the budget, but I can tell you is that that provision has been in the contract for some time. I think most admin-
Oh, is that because the Board of Ed is different?
Yeah.
They have their own expense, so they wouldn't be a part of that? Okay. I'll retract my statement, my question.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I know I'm probably harping on this, but I just want to make sure that we're clear. The only numbers that we're seeing honestly being affected in this presentation is the salary. And that is a $560,000-plus increase over the life of the four years of the contract.
That is correct.
For our budget.
Yes.
So, I want to make sure that we're clear that what I'm concerned about, I want to make sure is that next year, we don't receive a number that's $192 plus another $300,000 because of X, Y, and Z benefits are going up. I want to make sure that these numbers that we're looking at, because we have to look, you know, forward over the next four years of what this is going to cost the taxpayers.
Right.
So, I want to make sure that we're talking about, you know, I understand there might be some fluctuation, but plus or minus, we're looking at a $560,000 increase over four years. Next year, we have to deal with about $192,000.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that doesn't include whatever health insurance goes up.
But that would happen-
Yes, sir.
Regardless if we pass this or not, that's almost a fixed cost. It's whatever the city can negotiate. So, we have very little control over that anyway.
Yes.
So, the stuff that we have control over is really the salaries. And there's no other, there's no other costs to any of the other adjustments in this contract, from the current contract to the new contract. There's no other costs built into this that we have to be worried about.
Again, other than the de minimis cost for the life insurance increase? No.
Days off?
Oh, no.
Nothing?
No.
Vacations, nothing like that?
No.
Anyone else? You're all set? Okay. Councilman Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman, this is mainly probably for you. I don't mean to throw this off. If you wouldn't mind stepping up for a second? If you can answer it, fine. If not, fine too. So, the way this contract would work out, how does that impact our budget for next year? Do you know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head right now. Obviously, you know, the Board of Education gives us a number, and we work with the Board of Education as part of the mayor's proposed budget. And then it's up to the city council whether to give them that number or do that. But I'm sure as this contract was being done, this will be a factor going into next year's budget on the Board of Education side. So, we'll have to work closely with the Board of Education as we're preparing the mayor's budget.
The way it sits, and again, I know, I want to put you in the spot. Would it make a, do you feel that it would make a big impact? The way this, these numbers are, you won't be able to really tell.
Based on what I'm hearing with the Board of Education contract, I mean, again, I'd have to work with their finance director, because they have their own finance staff. And we'd have to look at these different areas of what's going up. Because like us, the Board of Education has fixed costs that are going up next year. So, these salary increases would have to be included in those fixed costs that are going up. And we'd have to look at whether there are any other cost-saving measures that can offset that or what the case is.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Ruby? Okay, does anybody else have any questions before we do anything else? We also have Ms. Waterfield here. Do you have anything you want to say? Are you good?
I do have a question.
Not yet. No, not yet.
She did.
You did? You did? Okay. Okay.
I'll withdraw on it until you get.
All right. The question I have is about the salaries. I see, and this might just be something that's in the current contract. I just had never seen it before. There's an additional $3,000 for, I believe, the doctorate? So, that's in addition to the salary. So, just assuming that if they're not already doctorally prepared, they would add an additional $3,000?
Yeah, they would only get that if they had a doctorate. And there's probably only three people.
So, if the additional, I'm sorry. If the additional people gain their doctorate while they're, they would-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none? Mayor?
Thank you, Floyd, for being here. I just wanted to comment on the percent increases. This is very similar to 1103, where we put the higher percentage at the top step, because once you reach the top step, there's nowhere for you to go. And that is more of a retention mechanism, because, you know, if you have no opportunity for an increase, we don't want to lose these administrators that we've invested in and have significant experience to another district. We already have some of that. And then the 2% is under average. So, I think the average between the 2% for those who are not at top step, and then retaining those that are at top step, was a pretty fair compromise compared to the other Board of Educations in our DIRK, which is what we measure ourselves against when we're looking at a cost analysis, right? So, who's in our DIRK? We compare ourselves to, I'm drawing on my Board of Ed days, Meriden, right? No? Norwalk. What we do is we look at cities that are same population, same ability to pay. You know, we don't compare ourselves to cities that are not, like West Haven.
Ansonia, Danbury Derby, East Hartford, Meriden, Milford, only because it's contiguous, New Haven, New London, Norwich, and so forth. I should also point out that the average teacher administrator settlements last year and so far this year are averaging just around 3%. So, to give an extra percent to the people who are making 10% to 15% below, 16% below the market isn't a whole lot.
And just to follow up, so those who are getting 2% have the opportunity to go to the next step. So, they have more opportunity to grow, and for that increase to compound.
Correct.
Before you sit down, I realize that this isn't going to get us fully in line with our neighbors. But am I correct that what we're trying to do here is get us closer over the next four years and spread it out over the four-year period and see-
That is correct.
How close we can get. In your estimation, how far below do you think we're still going to be?
10%.
Okay. Right now, we're, you said-
Well, it depends on the position. But it ranges from 10% to 16%. So, if we make up, you know, 3% or 4%, you know, you can do the math. We've still got a long way to go.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none? Majority caucus?
Thank you, time is 8:08, the council is back in session. Ms. Waterfield, would you take the podium?
Hi.
Thank you. You want to take it home?
This won't match my decor, but thank you for the offer.
It's a lovely home, too.
I'll donate it back to the city.
Two questions.
Tebby Waterfield, 70 CBU Avenue, Chairman of the Board of Ed.
Thank you. Just two questions. This contract, as far as you understand, and the Board favorably passed this, the Board of Education did.
Correct.
Unanimously. Unanimously. And it's your understanding that the figures in here for salaries for the administrators, that is what they're getting? There's no discretion?
No. It's a legally binding document.
So that's what they're getting?
That's what they would be getting.
Do you, can you just give us a rough idea of what the criteria is for a step increase and what the discretion is for that?
So, for teachers, there's multiple criteria based on education and length of time, et cetera. But for administrators, there's a finite set of jobs, so a job opening has to become available. And they have to have a certain amount of time in to move up to a step.
Okay. So if we approve this, then this is what they're getting? It's basically what I'm asking. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Waterfield? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Lox.
Hi, how are you?
I'm lovely, how are you, Brian?
I'm great. Thanks for coming tonight. Just a question, back to, this contract gets fully executed, you have dollars assigned to all the administrators, nurses, all those people that do work for the city. How do you, suppose, for instance, you have an administrator that, say, underperforms. You know, does that money get shifted elsewhere? Does it get moved anywhere else? Suppose you have an administrator that decides to, hey, I'm gonna leave the city, I'm gonna go to, I got a job in Milford, et cetera, et cetera. So you have a vacancy, the salaries with benefits is, you know, 120,000 plus 17 to 20 percent. Can you take that money and allocate it elsewhere in that type of situation?
So if they don't leave, I think you asked a couple of questions in there. So the first question is that their salary, there is, I don't know what the word is, but they're entitled to their salary by contract. So if they're underperforming in their job, that's a separate disciplinary action that would happen. Retraining, mentoring, however, whatever the process is for that. So that's separate from that. It's not a merit-based increase. It's a contract-based increase. Did I do that right?
I'm gonna turn it over to the legal那边. The, you know, the, it would be a discipline issue and has nothing to do with that. And the position, I am 95 percent sure, 99 would be filled by somebody else. You know, if you have a middle school principal who leaves, you need another principal. So you hire somebody or promote somebody and then backfill the assistant position. So that money will not go to waste, it will not be used for other things. It'll be, the position will be filled. You may have to pay more to get somebody, given what I said about the salaries. But the position will be filled and the money will be used for teacher, administrator salaries, period.
Okay. So in that instance, sorry about that. Obviously, a political novice and I'm not really understanding all the details of this thing in terms of funding. So if you have that person, suppose you don't fill the job, you can't fill the job, and you have $150,000 laying around. Has that never happened, or does that have potential to happen?
In this bargaining unit, I'd say it's unlikely to happen. You know, are there times when you have a teacher opening, particularly this time of year? Particularly like a special ed teacher. Sometimes it takes a month, you know, a few weeks to find somebody. So you may have a short period of time, and so, you know, but it gets filled, I mean.
Yeah, okay. But it's not like that funding would be allocated elsewhere to some other budget line, right? I mean, you have a binding contract, that money's not going out to buy a new truck for the school or something like that.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, great. That clarifies it. Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Tucker?
Either of you both. So I guess the question that I have is, what scenarios could lead to steps being frozen?
That would have to be negotiated. In this particular contract, we've agreed that people who are not at the top step already will advance a step. So that would have to be negotiated in the next contract, or.
So there's no freezing steps in this contract?
No, there are not.
Okay. So they're guaranteed to get the funds that we've allocated.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melton?
I have a question on page five of the contract, Article 7. I'm just a little curious about this provision where at age 65, any administrator who does not qualify for Medicare shall be provided with equivalent coverage paid in full by the employer.
I think that was the same question that Councilwoman Heffernan asked about Medicare coverage.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Heffernan?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah, the only scenario where that would happen is if somebody wasn't Medicare-eligible. And I'm hard-pressed to think of a situation where they wouldn't be.
So if that's the case, why do you step up to do that? I'm just curious, because it's an unusual provision.
There was a time period when teachers were not required to contribute towards Medicare. I'm going back 30 years. And so there still could be some residual teachers or administrators who fall into that category. So that's the scenario where it could potentially arise.
So you're, you do not, what I think I hear you say is you don't anticipate this being something that will occur with too many people?
Correct.
Anyone, if at all?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Any other questions? Mayor? Did you have anything?
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna respond to Brian, but I think, you know, I did a great job of that. But in response to your question about, let's say, somebody leaves and there's extra funds, it's usually sucked up by, somebody has to fill that. So like in 1103, it's usually sucked up by overtime. So it actually ends up costing us more when somebody leaves because, well, in our case, it's time and a half. So if somebody's vacant from that position, somebody's gonna have to do that job. It doesn't just stay vacant until you find somebody. So there's usually not, if there's lessened salary, it's made up somewhere else in a salary line item somewhere. Whether it's overtime or you pay somebody stipend to cover that particular shift or that school.
Thank you. For last time, any further discussion? Seeing none, council and Madam Chair, thank you for your help. I'm going to read the authorizing resolution. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 10-153B, the City of West Haven, buying through its Board of Education, and employee representatives of the West Haven Administrators Association engaged in collective bargaining and arrived at an agreement for an employee contract to commence on September 1, 2026, and to expire on October 31, 2029, which agreement has now been reduced to writing. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute cited above, the proposed agreement, written agreement, has now been submitted to the West Haven City Council for its approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves and ratifies the written contract dated September 2, 2025, by and between the West Haven Board of Education and the West Haven Administrators Association, giving the terms of such contract their full force and effect. Councilman Donovan, is it still your first to approve this?
Yes.
Councilman Lox, do you still second?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwait, I'd like to pass to see what my other colleagues think first.
Councilwoman Brian Lox?
Yes, approve.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan? Councilwoman Ruby Melton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Yes.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Edward McMillan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katie Muller?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Christopher Vargo?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mellie Garthwait?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Next item for councils whole is Communication C from the August 25, 2025 Agenda, from Mayor Dorinda Bora regarding a proposed new ordinance amending the Code of the City of West Haven to include Chapter 85 and ordinance concerning the illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles and street takeovers. We had the public hearing, and I'm going to now read the second reading of the summary. Chapter 85 of the Code of the City of West Haven will make it unlawful to, one, organize, participate in, or gather with the intent to observe the taking over a portion of a public highway or parking area by blocking or impeding the regular flow of traffic with intent to cause disorder or create a nuisance for other users of such highway or parking area; and, two, operate a "motorized recreational vehicle", defined to include all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, mini-cycles, motor-driven cycles, and snowmobiles on any street or sidewalk in the City of West Haven or on any public property, including but not limited to school property, playgrounds, and parks within the City of West Haven. Violators of Section 1 shall be fined $1,000 for a first offense, $1,500 for a second offense, and $2,000 for each subsequent offense. Violators of Section 2 shall be fined $1,000 for a first offense, $1,500 for a second offense, and $2,000 for each subsequent offense, and shall have such vehicle impounded until any fine, towing costs, and storage fees are paid. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as written?
Motion.
I have a first from Councilman Donovan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwait?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Lox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Yes.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Edward McMillan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katie Muller?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Christopher Vargo?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now we will enter into the Finance Committee. Chairwoman Akbarali.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 8:21, and your Committee on Finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Garthwait, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali as Chair. First, we have our finance updates. Mr. Gormany?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates. So the first update is, everyone should have received from Carla the August 2025 monthly report. Basically, there are no changes from the last, no changes as far as looking at the numbers. Again, this is the August monthly report. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, we really look at the first quarter before we start looking at trends in other areas. Right now, we're trending almost the same in our local revenue, so building permits and parking revenue, things like that. As I mentioned at the last meeting, taxes, we are, you know, waiting for primarily October. Again, as you know, we have the quarterly payments that we switched to. But as I mentioned at the last meeting, we really have to look at when the second payment is due in October to really gauge how we're doing on that. Because as I mentioned prior, some company, mortgage companies and things still paid in halves because it was a temporary thing that we were doing this year. So we'll have a better gauge, you know, as this first quarter passes into when the second payment is due, as far as those numbers. On the expense side, again, in July and August, we're really gearing up for the fiscal year. So these reports, you really just see a lot of the encumbrances and POs and things like that being created. So it's really a generic report that we give, you know, really for the first quarter because that's when the fiscal year is really gearing up. So again, as the year goes on, we'll have better, you know, the reports will change as, you know, we look at vacancies, overtime, revenues, you know, we'll start hitting those trends. So that's really my first update on the monthly report for August.
Thank you so much. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Gormany? Mayor Borr? I think everyone's off. Thank you.
Cut in front of anybody, but I just want to piggyback on what Michael said about the four quarterly tax payments. So I know you had asked in one of the meetings, did people take advantage of it? So the records indicate that almost 7,000 people used the four quarterly payments to pay their taxes. And I will tell you wherever, not wherever I go, but very often where I go, people will say that that was very helpful because we know, you know, what an impact revow had. It wasn't meant to, you know, disguise the increase. The increase is, you know, was the increase, but it was just meant to help ease the burden a bit. The only thing, you know, what Michael suggests is we have to wait until October to see what flushes out, flushes out for our cash flow. Because remember, we cash flow back and forth with the fire department over the taxes because we collect them. So we're just waiting until October is over to see what impact that had. I mean, we're gonna, we're fine the way we're doing it, but you gotta kind of move from this account to that account to make sure that, you know, everybody's covered. Once we have all that flushed out, we'll be able then come to you and say, you know what? This worked. Obviously, people liked it. 7,000 people took advantage of it. Why don't we consider doing it again? Because it was going to be a one-time thing for revow. I mean, if it worked and if it didn't burden the fire departments or us in cash flows. And then there's the challenge with the escrow. Some people might be getting a check back from their bank, you know, because there was confusion. We proactively, just so you know, we proactively sent out letters to all the mortgage companies and all the banks about what we were doing. We're not the only city, we're one of few that did it this way. So we want people to make sure they're paying attention when they're getting these notices from their escrow or their bank about what's going on with their escrow. So that's that. I think it was, whether it was successful, it was helpful to the 7,000 that did it, but we'll see how it all flushes out.
Thank you, Mayor Borr. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gormany. I really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next, we have Communication A from Deputy Chief Fleming regarding animal shelter donations. I'd like to open this up favorably. You have a motion, please? Motion. Second? Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Anyone on the council? Seeing there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Communication B from Rick Fontana to request that the City Council pass an authorizing resolution approving federal FY 2024 grant submission for the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. I'd like to open this up favorably, please. Motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Borr, if you want to speak?
No, as I'm sitting here, I'm realizing that I don't think we told Rick that it was postponed to this meeting. Did you guys? So, because he would be here, because he's always here.
So, because he would be here, because he's always here. And he, you know, does great work and he likes to present that and so make sure everybody understands it. So I'm going to trust, you know, we have to do some of these. You know, he's on top of the grants. He's on top of the applications. So it's something that needs to pass. But I'm going to give him a pass for not being here because I think none of us invited him.
Does anyone have any questions on the committee? Councilman Vargo?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that Mr. Fontana's come before us a number of times with applications such as this. He doesn't quite know what the dollar numbers are because it fluctuates from grant to grant from what our need is. But he's done a tremendous job finding other sources of revenue and other monies so that way he can further his work. So if this is a grant that he wants to pursue, I have absolutely no reason to say no to it.
Absolutely. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments? Seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. From Communication J from the July 28 Agenda, from Abdul Ghateer, City Engineer, regarding a bond ordinance for the planning, design, and construction of Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station in the amount of $32,900,000. I'd like to open this up favorably, please.
Motion.
Second? You have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. So does anyone have any questions on the committee regarding this dollar amount? Anyone on the council? All right, seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Chairman, the time is now 8:29 and your Committee on Finance is now closed.
Thank you. We will now enter Legislative Matters Committee. Acting Chairwoman Melton.
Thank you, Chairman Vargo. The time is now 8:30. And the Legislative Matters Committee is now in session. Present are Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, and Councilwoman Garthwaite, myself, Councilwoman Melton acting as Chair. Councilman Vargo is Acting Chair of the Council. We have before us Communication D from Michael Gorman, Director of Finance, regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter 42, Section 6, competitive bidding of the City of West Haven ordinance to be in conformity with State of Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148V, requirements for competitive bidding. I'm looking for a motion to bring this out to discussion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman, would you like to come to the podium and talk to us about this?
All right. Thank you, Chairwoman Melton. So what you have before you is an update to the City Procurement Ordinance, as stated in the letter, which really goes in conformity with the State of Connecticut General Statute. In this past legislative session, the State of Connecticut changed their general statute, which governs municipal purchasing thresholds. They changed it from $25,000 to $35,000. So what my office did along with the Chief of Staff and our procurement is we looked at the last time the city's purchasing threshold was changed. The last amendment that we could find, which is listed right in the code as well, was November of 2007. So currently, the way that our threshold is set is anything $10,000 and above needs to go out to sealed bidding. Sealed bidding and RFP or RFQ unless we are piggybacking off of a cooperative service agreement like Sourcewell or the State of Connecticut or something that allows us to piggyback. That threshold of $10,000 has not been changed since 2007. As you know, like many individuals, small businesses, whatever, the city experiences increasing supplies, materials, and things like that. So as those prices have gone up, you know, we need a more efficient way to be able to procure our items. And sometimes that $10,000 threshold in certain situations may limit or delay a project, which really causes inefficiencies within the city. So what we're looking and seeking from the council is really to raise that threshold. Again, that general statute that I mentioned in the letter from the State of Connecticut does govern municipality threshold. So it's not like we can say, let's raise it to $50,000 or, you know, $100,000. The State of Connecticut does set the limit. And there are some other smaller guidelines within that state statute as well. But what I'm seeking is to raise that... Basically, our threshold would raise from $10,000 to $35,000. So any type of service... And we do look at it on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis because those type of services can either mean cumulative or by project within that threshold. So we're seeking to increase that threshold beginning this fiscal year because, to be quite honest, even though we're a couple of months into the fiscal year, it is easier from a timing perspective to look at it, to be in uniform with our fiscal year. So this would go back to July 1 of this year with this. Now, just to also kind of compare us to other cities and towns, there was an Exhibit A on the letter, which kind of... I had our senior buyer actually contact other cities and towns to see what their procurement thresholds were. And as you can see, based on that Exhibit, a lot of them are in conformity with the State of Connecticut statute that we were able to contact and get back to us. Or we even went as far as to look at their actual city ordinance as well to see what that is. Now, the secondary piece of this is, you know, we also do have our own guidance that we follow within the Finance Department, which really monitors these thresholds and when we need to go out to bid. So one of the things that we looked at during the budget time, if you remember, in the Purchasing Department was advertising, right? We seen that the advertising budget had gone over budget by about $15,000 at that time. And again, that was because we came in, we looked at all the contracts that needed to be procured. We made sure that whatever needed to go out to bid, we advertised for it. We went out to bid. So we really do look at these vendors and the type of services that we're doing to make sure that they're in line with our internal policies and with the thresholds that are set by ordinance. So again, that's... Again, we're just looking to be in uniform with the state and whatever they set at any time. So I think the state just... This is their first amendment, I believe, in like six or seven years with the state on that statute, I believe. I may be wrong on that, but I remember six to seven years for some reason. But so our statute would update when they... Our ordinance would update when they update their statute in time. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Do any committee members have questions for Mr. Gorman?
How you doing, Mike?
Great. How are you?
Good. Do you have a feel for... Because there's a soft cost associated with processing purchase orders, RFPs, and that sort of thing. Any idea how many purchase orders, RFPs got processed last year at the $10,000 level?
Yeah, so a majority of our... A majority of our purchase orders were really... Are you talking about below $10,000 or above $10,000?
Well, you said it went from $10,000 to $35,000, which is fantastic.
Yep.
Because there's a savings associated with that. That's great. But do you have a feel for how many of those $10,000? You know, your senior buyers had to, you know, execute last year?
So last year, we actually advertised around 60 RFPs, RFQs invitations to bid. And those all obviously exceeded the $60,000... $10,000 mark, which is why we had to advertise them. So it was a little bit above 60 that we actually advertised, awarded, and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out the savings off the top of my head. I mean, typically, the rule of thumb has always been 250 bucks. So if you multiply 50 bucks by that amount, it's like a $15,000 savings annually, which is great.
Yeah.
You know, so you should submit that cost savings to the mayor. So it's noted. And quite honestly, Mike, the way I feel is you could take tomorrow off.
I appreciate that. Duly noted.
No, that's great. I mean, it's great that that's being done. I wish it was higher for your sake. Say 50 grand, because that would take the administrative burden off the office. But it helps.
Yeah, no, I think this will absolutely help. And just overall, like I said in my speaking notes, efficiency as well. Because again, that $10,000 mark not being updated for so many years with costs going up, all of a sudden, we were able to do quotes with vendors to get work done. Now, with the cost of materials, supplies, labor, everything, we actually got to go out to bid, which causes more of a... You know, the minimum bid advertisement is 10 days. So before we could get three quotes, now we're waiting beyond 10 days.
Painful. Painful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. That's great.
Chairman Vargo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike or Attorney Dorsey, just want to make sure. What we've done in the past on some of these ordinances is we've put in... The ordinances that are currently in place, they've had either fixed dollar amounts or fixed terms. But what we've done in the past is if it mirrors a state statute, we're just tailoring it so that way we don't have to come back every, you know, so many years. So I'm correct that if we pass this as written, then if the statute, the state decides to increase the number to 40,000, then automatically our threshold's 40,000, correct?
Correct.
And then my last question's for the mayor. I know that it was very, very important to you when you entered office that we don't allow what has happened in the past, the abuses, to happen. And I know that you worked hard to put in safeguards. One of them is this threshold. Are you confident that the other safeguards you put in place are sufficient? And you're good with this?
Yes. Good question. But Michael and I discussed when they passed this law that we thought we would mirror the state statute so we don't have to keep coming back. And for the reasons Michael said, right? Prices went up 20 years later. You know, every time something breaks and city holds, 10 days a bid we got to pay for. We got to, you know, it's very cumbersome, although I firmly believe in the RFP process. But before we submitted the ordinance, Michael and I updated the purchasing policy, right? So if it's under 35, how do we get those quotes? How do we document those quotes? You still have to go out and get estimates. You just can't, you know, say, oh, we're going to do this for $25,000. You still have to shop it like you would shop, you know, anything you do. And we also put safeguards in place so that no one can pay a vendor 25 here and maybe 31,000 here and then another 29,000. There's a cumulative vendor report that, you know, we look at today. And that would be the same vendor report that Michael, our auditor, Rodney Quag, our treasurer... You know, there's a process where we look and see what checks are being cut. So I'm pretty comfortable.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else on the committee?
Hey, Mike. So in your exhibit, you have... We're at 10, and you've got New Haven, Waterbury, Hampden, Stamford, Norwalk, Milford, Bridgeport, Hartford, East Haven, oh, just to Hartford. They're all at 25 now.
Correct.
Is there... And then we have a few other cities that are lower. Is there any city in Connecticut that's at 35 now?
Well, this Public Act was just passed as part of the legislative... This past legislative session. So it would depend on how their ordinances in their cities are written, whether it automatically updates or they have to go back to their legislative body. So because this was just passed, we figured we just come here with the most updated Public Act that the state has passed. But I assume those... I actually worked on the one in New Haven before I was... Before I came here. So that was based off the State of Connecticut one. The other cities and towns were based off of the state statute, according to my senior buyer when she talked to those cities and towns. So I can only assume maybe they'll update them to 35. But again, this was just done in this past legislative session.
Okay, so we don't really know who's updating.
No, I could only get the information.
Right, so we might be the first.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to comment?
No, I was just going to echo what Michael said that... So when we say it just passed, it passed in July. We started working on it in August. So we probably... So we get a listing of all the bills that pass, and then we send them out to the different departments and say, take a look at these and see what we can do. So I think we're a little ahead of the curve.
Yeah, definitely.
Anyone else on the council have any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Yes, I rescind my second.
I rescind my first.
Sorry about that.
Was it me? Was it me? That's what I thought.
Stacy's got it. We're good.
I don't know.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Councilwoman, your mic.
Sorry, so Councilman Lox has rescinded his motion and Councilwoman Tucker has rescinded her second. So we will be requesting a public hearing on the amended ordinance.
Okay, so we'll set this down for a public hearing for Tuesday, October 14, because the 13th is a holiday, at 6:50.
So I'd like to move on to the next item on the Legislative Matters Committee Agenda. Communication I from the July 28 Agenda from Mayor Dorinda Bora regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. Did I have to redo the time for this or just keep going? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to bring this out for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dorsey, would you like to come to the podium? Or do you want...
Deputy Corporation Counsel, Michael Todd Taylor, as well, who has done the lion's share of the work on this. He also is the attorney assigned to the Fair Rent Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Todd Taylor, Deputy Counsel, Corporation Counsel's Office.
So we have received your amended ordinance and we also received Mr. Taylor's September 9 memo to Christopher Vargo, Attorney Dorsey, and Stephen Mullins, which sets out the action taken by the Fair Rent Commission with respect to each provision of the ordinance, which discussed at the City Council meeting on August 25. Would you like to... Should I open it up for questions to the committee? Or would you like to make some kind of an opening statement about that?
Yeah, and so the Fair Rent Commission met to discuss the testimony that was held at the meeting. And they thought that the... And they thought that the, um, items raised by those who testified made sense, and they thought about it, and we, as a group, decided to put it in the memo form, which hopefully explains the intent behind the amendments. But if there's any questions with respect to the items in the memo or the respective changes made, I'm all too happy to answer.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions about the arc of the ordinance? Anyone on the council?
I'll just make a statement.
Okay.
Attorney Taylor, um, I want to thank you and the commission for listening and taking into account, um, I'm sorry, I forgot the gentleman's name, but I, I know that he is very knowledgeable in this area, and I applaud you for just heeding his advice. And I see that a lot of what was discussed made its way in here, some things I understand that you don't agree with, and that's totally fine. I think this is a very well-written document. I applaud the commission for their hard work and, and you for your hard work. And I think that we've got a good, solid ordinance that we could, we could put forward and get rid of the antiquated one that we've had for a while. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Vargo.
Uh, Mayor, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, yeah, thank you for your work. I see Mason is back and provided testimony. And this is exactly what a public session's for, right? So we had something on the table, folks came forward, they gave input, it was valuable input. We don't always have all the answers. That's why we seek, you know, input. And I think it worked out well, and we were able to make those changes. And thanks for all your work on it.
I, I'd like to echo what Chairman Varga and the mayor said as well. I was very impressed with the testimony. And we asked for this memo. We got the memo that we asked for, and I agree with, that it's very well done and appreciate your work on it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I would, at this time, like to ask for members to rescind their first and second.
I'll rescind my first.
I'll rescind my second.
And we'll be, we'd like to request a public hearing on this amended ordinance.
Public hearing will be set for Tuesday, October 14th at 6:55.
Thank you. And that concludes the business of the Legislative Matters Committee. The time is now 8:50. Thank you, Chairman Varga.
Thank you, Acting Chairwoman. The time is 8:50. Council as a whole is reconvening. Onto unfinished business. We have the FY 2025, 2026 Budget Registrar of Voters Personnel. We received a response from the State of Connecticut Office of the Secretary of State. Attorney Dorsey, would you mind taking the podium when you have a second? So I want to make sure that the record is very clear on what has transpired. So if you indulge me, I just want to go down memory lane a little bit. We were presented a budget for FY 2526 that had, in the registrar's office, a request for a administrative assistant and an office manager.
Correct.
And the council, in conducting its due diligence, realized that the positions were essentially one in the same, and the council decided that they were going to be called Assistant Registrar. And we made that adjustment, and that budget was passed. About a couple of weeks later, during public session, we were informed during the public session that one of the employees does not meet the criteria to hold that position, and that that job would be lost as of July 1st of this year. During that meeting, the council voted to amend the budget to restore the title of Administrative Assistant, so that way it essentially put a pause on that action. And we asked the Corporation Counsel's Office to give us an opinion and to ask the State of Connecticut Election Enforcement Commission to, is that the correct body?
In the Secretary of State's.
In the Secretary of State's office, to give an opinion on Attorney Dorsey's opinion of whether or not somebody has to be an elector of the City of West Haven in order to perform certain job functions. And we also asked the Registrar of Voters Office for a list of job functions that this individual performs. That information and that request was made in writing to the Secretary of State. Attorney Dorsey's opinion, and I'll paraphrase, was that certain job functions under the statute this individual could not perform unless she was a elector of the city.
That's right.
The, uh, the list, along with the request, was made to the state, and the state very succinctly said it agrees with you.
Yes.
Your analysis, agrees with your analysis.
Yes.
Correct. Did I, did I miss anything?
One thing I would add is that not only did my office receive a list from the Republican Registrar, but I then met with her and the employee and went through the statutory list of, of, um, job functions that can only be, be performed by a, by a voter of the municipality, just to be crystal clear on, on everything and, and what she was doing, what she was expected to do. And I presented that list to the Secretary of State's office as well.
And the Secretary of State of State's office gave an opinion that your analysis was indeed correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else that I, that you want to add?
I have not heard back from Election Enforcement as of today.
And what would they, what are you waiting for?
An opinion, and also an answer with respect to consequences.
Okay. So at this time, I think that it is pretty clear what an administrative assistant is and is not allowed to do. It came before us under the, the budget. I think that we leave the budget as is for this year, and the Registrar of Voters Office is, is free to make whatever adjustments it deems necessary in its proposed 2627 budget. I would like a letter sent from the City Council, and Attorney Dorsey, I'm gonna ask if you would assist in drafting that, but it'll be for the chairman's signature, or mine if he designates me since I'm chairing this meeting, that provides a copy of your analysis and your opinion, a copy of the document from the Secretary of State agreeing with your opinion, and explaining to the Registrar's Office, that is, the City Council's expectation that employees will follow the letter of the law and only perform the duties that they are statutorily eligible to perform. And if there is a violation, that it be dealt with by whichever office is appropriate, but it be dealt with quickly and appropriately. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the sending of that letter. I have a motion from Attorney Mc, uh, Attorney. Councilman McMillan, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Acbarelli. Do I have any discussion? Councilwoman Garthwaite.
Attorney Dorsey. Within the body of what you presented to the council, there was mention of Section 9-19F.
Correct.
That's the out-of-town assistance permitted at admission sessions. The Registrar of Voters or the deputy or any assistant registrar of voters of any town may, upon the request of the Registrar of Voters of any town, assist such registrar or deputy or assistant registrar at any session for the admission of electors held pursuant to Section 9-19 or subsection A of Section 9-19 in the town in which the requesting registrar resides.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, is that our Republican Registrar of Voters feels that because Veronica was made an Assistant Registrar of the town of Orange, that with this law, this statute, that she can assist in these duties here in West Haven as well?
What, which duties? The statute specifically mentions sessions, and there's, they're defined in the general statutes. The required sessions, the required sessions. Once a year out of high school is required, right? Certain distributions have to be made in schools with respect to voter registration. That's considered a session. Another, in so many terms. Another session would be going to a place of employment with 25 or more employees who all sign that say they want to register to vote. So my gosh, we got to register these people to vote. The election's coming up, we're up against deadlines. You can call Orange, you can call Milford, you can call Derby or wherever, and request help from a, a registrar, an assistant registrar, or a deputy registrar. Under those circumstances, those situations only, not on a day-to-day basis.
Not on a day-to-day.
In other words, if a walk-in person comes to the registrar, registrar's office, they want to register the vote, they have to be met with a qualified registrar, elected registrar, deputy or assistant.
So it can't be?
Can't be.
Okay.
Well, under the circumstances which that, yeah, you're absolutely correct. Under those circumstances of a special, not special, there's, there's also special sessions, but what they, what the statute's defined as a, either a registration session or admitting session, they're defined by the statutes. And that's what, that borrowing of the, your neighbor's, your, you know, another town's qualified registrar or assistant or deputy is all about. But not the day-to-day functions of the office, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, on the motion, I would like a roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Melly Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Lox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ann Heffernan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acbarelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Edward McMillan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katie Mueller?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Christopher Vargo?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Attorney Dorsey, would you assist the council in drafting the language for that letter? And I'll review it with Chairman Pascal, and then he could decide which of us will, will sign it on behalf of the council, and then we'll take care of sending it out.
I shall.
I appreciate that. And at this point, I have conferred with Chairman Pascal, and now that the motion's passed, this is resolved as far as the State Council is concerned, and this will be coming off of our agenda. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, first up is Finance Committee, Chairwoman Acbarelli.
Thank you, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 22nd day of September 2025 to consider the matter of the animal shelter donations. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the animal shelter donations totaling $640 to be deposited in the Animal Shelter Donations Account Number Edward Salerno, $100. John A. Knight, $100. Arthur J. Pena, $50. John S. Chidsey, $40. Patricia W. Susko, $25. Bonnie P. Amato, $25. Leslie Corona, $50. Sarah Elizabeth DeRose, $50. Gina M. Ricchio, $100. Clifford L. Bartis Jr., $100, totaling $640, and I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding a matter of animal shelter donations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 22nd day of September 2025 to consider the matter of, regarding a request that the City Council pass an authorizing resolution approving federal FY 2024 grant submission for the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves and authorizes the City of West Haven to execute any and all documents in agreements with the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, dash, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Protection related to the fiscal year 2024 State Homeland Security Grant Program Region 2 memorandum of agreement, and be it further resolved. Dorinda Bora, as Mayor of the City of West Haven, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to the resolution on behalf of the City of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding the passing of an authorizing resolution to approve federal FY 24 grant submission by Mr. Rick Fontana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 22nd day of September 2025 to consider the matter of, from the July 20, 20, I'm sorry, July 28th agenda, from a dual-kit year, city engineer regarding the bond ordinance for the planning, design, and construction of Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station in the amount of $32,900,000. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the ordinance appropriates the maximum amount of $32,900,000 approved in the city's fiscal year 2024-2025 capital budget for the costs associated with the planning, design, construction, and issuance to finance such capital projects in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 109 of the Connecticut General Statutes, of new sewer pump stations at Dawson Avenue and East Avenue, and the authorization for the issuance of $32,900,000 bonds to meet that appropriation. The ordinance approves for an 80% loan with a 2% interest rate over 20 years, with payment, payment funds coming from sewer use charges and the WPCC budget. Application will be made to the DEEP for a grant provided by the Clean Water Fund to fund remaining 20% of the project's costs. The proposed ordinance will authorize the mayor, the finance director, and the treasurer, the bond committee, to sell such bonds in a competitive or negotiated offering. Authorize bonds to be issued pursuant to the terms of the city's trust indenture. Authorize the bond committee to issue bond anticipation notes for short-term financing prior to the issuance of the bonds. Authorize the bond committee to take all necessary actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, including actions related to the tax-exempt nature of the bonds, the reimbursement of prior city capital expenditures, and those needed to satisfy post-issuance disclosure obligations. And authorizes the mayor of the city, uh, I'm sorry, the mayor, the finance director, and other duly authorized city officials to apply grants for the capital projects. And I so move.
Thank you. I think Attorney Dorsey gets paid by the word.
That was a mouthful.
Oh, did it? I have a, I have a motion regarding a matter of a bonding ordinance in the amount of $32,900,000 for the Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman, and that concludes the business in finance.
Thank you. Moving on to Legislative Matters, Acting Chairwoman Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Committee on Legislative Matters met this 22nd day of September 22nd day of September 2025 regarding the matter of Communication D from Michael Gorman, a Director of Finance, regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter 42, Section 6, competitive bidding of the City of West Haven ordinance to be in conformity with State of Connecticut General Statute Section 7-148V. Requirements for competitive Statute Section 7-148V requirements for competitive bidding. Mr. Chairman, our committee was presented with an amended ordinance, and I have requested a public hearing on the amended ordinance.
Public hearing will be set for Tuesday, October 14th, at 6:50.
I will now read a summary of the ordinance.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of West Haven, Chapter 42, Section 6, Competitive Bidding, commencing fiscal year 2025-2026. The proposed amended ordinance will change the estimated cost threshold at which a supplier or contractual service shall be purchased or awarded by formal written contract from the lowest responsible bidder, from $10,000 to that amount enumerated in Section 7-148V of the Connecticut General Statutes, currently $35,000. Moving on to, aye, right? Mr. Chairman, your Committee on Legislative Matters met this 22nd day of September 2025 regarding the matter of Communication I from the July 28th agenda from Mayor Dorinda Borrer regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. Mr. Chairman, our committee was presented with an amended ordinance, and I am requesting a public hearing on the amended ordinance.
Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th, at 6:55.
I will now read a summary of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Summary of an ordinance amending Chapter 97 Fair Rent Commission of the Code of the City of West Haven. The amended ordinance will allow an alternate member of the Fair Rent Commission to vote in the absence of a regular member, authorizes the commission to report offenses to other appropriate city apartments, including the police department, allows the consideration of the frequency of rent increases and landlord improvements to the rental property, clarifies commission voting procedures and the existence of a quorum, and sets a time schedule for the commission to conduct hearings and issue decisions on complaints. And that concludes the report of the Legislative Committee.
Thank you very much. Moving on to council liaison reports, are there any reports? Councilwoman Garthwaite.
I just want to say that there is a cleanup at the animal shelter, not cleanup, a bottle sort at the animal shelter on September 20th. They will be there till 12, if anyone would like to go and help. Yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, my God.
Did you miss it?
I missed it. I'm sorry, I've been so busy lately. I, I apologize.
Problem.
I'm behind a week. Please disregard.
Was that, was that it?
That is all.
Okay. Any other council liaison reports? Okay. Moving on to new business, the only piece of new business I have is I hope that you will all stop by the Apple Festival across the street. It is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Hopefully, we have good weather, enjoy some food and some entertainment, and if you have kids, let them bounce in the bounce houses, and we'll have a good time. Anybody else? Councilwoman Tucker?
I just want to take a minute to tell everyone, thank you for extending condolences to my family. We did lose my nephew in a very tragic highway accident on I-95 when he was working. But the West Haven Police Department just did a phenomenal job. We did reach out to them to provide, you know, escort service so that we could be safely, you know, we can safely move the processional through West Haven, New Haven, into Hamden, and then ultimately to the church. And they just did a phenomenal job, all three jurisdictions, New Haven Police, West Haven Police, Hamden Police, and Waters Construction, which was the company that he was working for when this incident took place. So, I just wanted to extend thank yous to all of the police, all of the first responders, and, you know, to all the people that reached out and wished condolences to the family. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Donovan?
Yeah, I just want to thank the City Council and the mayor, she left, but for sending that fruit basket, which had no light, that, once it got into the house, it was pretty much gone in about three and a half hours, believe it or not, from the hip surgery. So, I want to thank everybody for their generosity and the concerns and phone calls I got from them. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilwoman Melton?
Mayor isn't here, but I just wanted to mention lantern flies. And I, and I'm mentioning them because it seems like it's a pandemic or, you know, it's an infestation all over the city, and I was just hoping for some idea of what, if anything, the city might be doing about them, because, I mean, they really are quite extraordinarily. Well, they're everywhere. You can't, you can really, you can't really sit out on the beach, you can't sit out on your porch, there are people who are vacuuming, vacuuming them up. We've looked into all sorts of, you know, our landscaping department, et cetera. So, I, I didn't know, I, I thought this was sort of a citywide issue for us to be addressing. And I was statewide, of course, but it's, you know, they tell you to call the DEP, but they don't even want you to call the DEP anymore. So, it's, I just thought maybe I would just put it out there and wonder, you know, and I haven't seen anything in our, on social media or in the press about what the city might be doing to address it, or has it just sort of put its hands up and said, let's wait until next year? Because there are some, there is some information out there about some of the trees that are around the pump station, for example, that might be bad for them, and then a lot of information about the things that might be helpful, like growing milkweed, for example, in, in a lot of different areas. But I just, I'm sorry? But anyhow, I, I put it out there because I, I'm, we're, we're at a loss in our community, and I just wondered if this was something that was being addressed citywide by anyone?
So, I think what we can do is we could just send a email over to Mr. Sissick and just inquiring, does the city have any protocols in place or any suggestions of what homeowners and community members can do? I know I have them in my yard, and I've just been aggressively going after them, but they outnumber me.
There was, there was a communication from the Health Department, which we sent out to people, but that's, you know, we all know you can take Dawn and water and spray them and, but that, that seems to be a very.
I, I know that they like the train station, because Councilman Lox loves to walk the train station, and we, we get photos of, you were going to say that?
Yeah, I was going to say that swarms at the train station.
Yeah.
I, I pick up my wife every night, and she got off, she goes, look at this. There were a whole bunch of people surrounded, like a swarm of them.
And they're falling through window crevices and things like that. So, yeah, I didn't know if this was the appropriate place to bring it up, but I thought maybe there might be something.
I had sent photos to the mayor and Phil, and they basically said they, they had been spraying Old Grove Park, because apparently there was a bolt load down there, too. So, I guess it's getting addressed, but I don't, to what extent.
Yeah, it's just, you don't know how it's being addressed. It'd be helpful to know, but anyhow, I just thought I would.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Before we leave, I just want to leave us on one parting thing. We, we had a couple of challenging things on, on this evening's agenda that we had to get through, and I know that, you know, we start and stop, it start and stop, but that's our job. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. We're, we're doing our job. We're taking our time, we're getting the information, we're debating it, we're discussing it to make sure that we're making the best decisions that we can. So, I just want to say thank you all for being thoughtful and working hard to try to make the best decisions we can with the information we have at the time, and then when we get new information, we, we make adjustments accordingly. So, I'm just, I'm proud of the work that everyone put in tonight, and I thank you. Motion to adjourn? Second, third, fourth. Good night.